I'd like to call to order the City of Middletown City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 7, 2020. Let's start with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for this unique city council meeting opportunity tonight where we get to practice our social distancing and our IT prowess. So we're hosting this via Zoom conference tonight in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the recently signed Ohio House Bill 197, which temporarily amends the public meetings law. So the meeting agenda is going to be conducted as normal, and as you guys can tell, we're streaming this live on Facebook, and it's going to also be posted on YouTube afterwards. Ms. Gink, will you please call the roll for us?
Ms. Vittori?
Here.
Ms. Nenney?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mulligan?
Here.
Mayor Condry?
Here.
Okay, we previously had a public hearing scheduled for tonight, the 2020 Annual Action Plan regarding HUD funding, but this is going to be postponed until April 21, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm just going to read this little piece here. It says, "The City of Middletown, as directed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is submitting its program year..." I'm going to guess that's supposed to be 2020 Annual Action Plan, setting the program activities and budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program. All right, let's move on to citizen comments. Amy, I think you said we don't have any tonight, though.
I did not receive any citizens' comments.
Okay, we did put out there if any citizens wanted to comment on this in this unique way that they would email Amy by 4:30 PM today. So if we end up doing this again, which probably we will, then please go ahead and email. It's amyss@cityofmiddletown.org in the future if you have any comments for council, and we also do it via Zoom. If you guys comment in the Facebook Live feed tonight, just note that we aren't going to be responding in the meeting, but we will respond later as appropriate to anything that's relevant. So we'll go ahead and definitely get back to you. All right, let's start with council comments. I'm just going to go by who I can see on Zoom right now, which is a little different. So how about Mr. Moon? Do you have any comments for us tonight?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just I'll be brief. I want to thank city staff, specifically Health Commissioner Jackie Phillips, for all the continued excellent work she's doing and the staff is doing. These are unusual times, and it's just incredible to see everybody working as one collective unit and doing an excellent job. To Middletown, please stay safe, stay home, and I look forward to seeing you in person here hopefully very soon, and that's all I have.
Right, Ms. Vittori?
Thank you. I would echo the compliments and gratitude to the staff, and especially our health department, who I know are working around the clock, and I would just offer whatever words of solace I can to my fellow small business owners. I know we're all really trying to keep our spirits up and support each other, and I've really been blown away by the community and how many people have reached out to me about all the businesses that I have being closed and understanding that we're all really working hard together to keep and hopefully reopen our vibrant downtown and the rest of our small businesses. So I echo again, Mr. Moon, keeping everyone safe and hands washed and just stay home for a while, which isn't comfortable for us, but I think in the long run it'll get us back out and seeing each other in person sooner.
Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one comment. There was an article in the newspaper about the census reporting as far as year-to-date for the City of Middletown. We're a little bit under the reporting percentage for the state of Ohio, so I'd encourage Middletown residents to fill out those census forms, make sure that we get a good count for the Middletown residents, because it's really important, not only for our city, but for our county and for our state, to have good representation in Congress, good representation in the Senate, and also plays into redistricting for the State House, too. So please take some time during, if you have downtime in the next several days, to complete those census forms and make sure that we have a good count. Thank you.
Ms. Nenney?
Thank you, Mayor Condry. I would echo Councilman Moon and Vittori's comments about the staff and the citizens and essential workers and everyone who is staying home and helping us flatten the curve. I also would reiterate Councilman Mulligan's comments about turning in your census form. Clearly, we've all got a little extra free time on our hands, so hopefully people will find the time to turn those in and help to count all of our votes. And then I also want to send condolences to Jeffrey Diver and his family. He is the Executive Director of SELF, and his father passed recently unexpectedly. Ron Diver was an advocate for education, an example of the importance of service to our community, someone who hopefully we could all use as an example of how to give back to the community. So I just want to send our condolences on behalf of the city council to Jeff and his family. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll add my comments. I'm very grateful for all the city staff, specifically Susan and Jackie and Jackie's entire department. Also Shelby Quinlevan has been working really hard to keep the citizens up to date. Also, our chiefs of fire and police are doing a great job, and I've been working really diligently to try to condense everything that they have, that they've said, as well as speak with our local other mayors and leaders, state level, national level. I've been on a lot of phone conferences over the last month, and they're starting to add up more and more. But we're also trying to advocate for resources here in Middletown. So lots going on. We're finding difficulty reaching our teens and 20-year-olds. They seem to be the biggest violators of the stay-at-home order, so if you have teens or 20-year-olds at home, please, you know, pay a little bit closer attention to where they're going and help them understand the gravity of the situation. And if you have a good idea of how to reach them better, please let me know, because I don't have the greatest knowledge of that. Also, you can still get out and vote, or say in and vote. The 28th of April is the new deadline for the primaries, so I understand Kroger has a lot of the absentee ballots available at Kroger facilities. You can also apply for those ballots to be sent to you in the mail, so please get out, get that vote out. I'm doing a daily Facebook Live every day for you guys. It's about 10 minutes long. It's being simultaneously cast on the city's Facebook page. If you haven't dialed into that, it's about at 4:00 PM daily anymore, but it's got a lot of good information. I'm spending all day and night trying to distill the national, the state, the local information down to what it means for Middletown citizens, so I really recommend it. And if you haven't watched them to date, maybe you can binge-watch them tomorrow. But big thank you to so many people for the city, everyone, every single citizen. This is the one time where we can all save the world by staying at home, so that's kind of a fun thing to be able to say. But also one event I wanted to mention, Easter egg hunts. DMI is putting on an Easter egg hunt in downtown Middletown, which is really cool. Families can stay in their cars and still search for Easter eggs, so look on their website and find that. I think it's a really great family activity. I'm grateful for them for putting that together. So one thing, as we all are finding a little bit lack of patience probably as things are happening, I just thought I would quote Tim McGraw, because I love his song, "Always Be Humble and Kind." So let's just keep that up, guys. You're doing a great job. All right, city manager reports. Ms. Cohen, would you like to?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank council and the staff for letting me take a bit of a break during the last meeting. I took a little bit of a well-needed vacation to Florida, and I appreciate Scott Tadic particularly for filling in during this odd time and doing such a great job. I have been back the past few weeks, and it has been all COVID pandemic all the time. Wanted to thank all of the council members and the staff that have stepped up so well during this time. I appreciate everyone for reaching out to try and offer help and assistance, and all of the phone calls you have made about funding and resources and things have been greatly appreciated. As far as some updates for citizens, you will see some new hand washing stations that have been posted around town. There's five mostly in the downtown, the park area. It's our hope that that will help people stay safe and exercising that good hygiene in this time. I got some questions about why we did not choose to do sanitizer stations. We'd looked at those, but we were very concerned about being able to get replacement sanitizer, so we didn't want to put a station out there and then not be able to replace the supplies, so we went with the hand washing stations instead. You will also notice, as Mayor Condry alluded to, there's been some concerns about the teens and 20-somethings not abiding by the stay-at-home order. One area that has come to our attention has been things like pickup basketball games in the parks. I want to encourage everyone to use our fantastic park system during this time, but while you're there, make sure that you are engaging in safe social distancing. In order to help that along, we have blocked off all of the play equipment, and we have started to take down or block the basketball hoops. I hate to do things like that, but I think it is necessary at this point in time to try and keep everyone safe and abiding by those orders so that we can move through this. As far as the city has been going, we have been in constant contact with emergency management agencies, trying to make sure we have all the available resources that the city needs. I have also already submitted our FEMA request for assistance to start to recoup some of our costs as the city for the response to this pandemic, so we are working through those issues. I know our first responders, as well as our health department, have been working tirelessly. We share everyone's concerns that we are going to start running out of personal protective equipment. We have been working with emergency management to try and manage those expectations and get any equipment we can. I appreciate people that have donated hand sanitizers and cleaning wipes. It does really help all, keep our officers and our first responders safe, but we are going to be continuing to look at that issue as we move forward through this and as supplies start to dwindle. I have been working with Finance Director Burton to evaluate the city's finances, because we know it's possible there will be a financial repercussion for this. We do have some bright spots in this, though. Going into this year, we do have a healthy reserve that we're going to use to cushion some of the fall. We also have our 2020 budget projected about 8% less in revenue than our 2019 budget, so we did have a bit of a cushion already built into the budget for a reduction in revenues. Of course, no one's going to be able to tell you what the actual loss of funds is going to be. I can tell you Jake has looked at what our losses, percentage losses, were during the Great Recession, and he estimated 14% for the Great Recession, so we've been using that as a bit of a benchmark, but that is obviously just guessing at this point. In order to try and shore up some of those funds, I've talked to staff about what projects we need to complete, what we can put on the back burner, what hiring can be put on the back burner, what positions can be left open a few months at least so that we can recoup some savings on that. I also spoke with Jake about any savings that we have already recognized during the year. We have certain positions that we have not been able to fill this year that were budgeted. We have certain positions that stayed open a little bit longer than we anticipated. We also have jobs like the city manager, where every month we don't hire someone, and it's a savings in the budget. We also have some money that we've already recognized savings, because employees have taken different, less expensive health insurance plans than we would have budgeted for otherwise. So you will see before you at our next meeting on the 21st, legislation to deappropriate $285,000 as a first step to capture those savings, remove them from the budget, and hope to address increasing our cushion for the fallout from this. I don't anticipate that will be the last of these that we have to do, but I wanted to get that ball rolling and start moving some of those monies out of the budgeted funds so that we'll have even more of a cushion when we need it. So you should see that in front of you on the 21st. Again, those are savings from things we have already realized this year, so it would not be a drop in services. It's merely capturing right now what savings we know we've reached at this point in the year. By deappropriating those funds, I just want to make sure everyone understands those are out of the budget. We would be unable to spend those until council takes further action. So if in the event we need them for further operations later in the year, we would come back to you with an appropriation of those dollars for whatever is necessary at the Along with the city-focused issues, I know we have a lot of issues related to our citizens, those particularly that are out of work and are small business owners. Information is being pushed out daily from the federal government and the state government about what their stimulus packages are. We have been taking a conscious effort to look at those packages, make sure we are not using our, what city funds we do have, to double those efforts. So we've really been waiting to push something out until we're able to pinpoint exactly what needs are in the market that have not been met. So you will hear those in the next couple, couple of days and weeks as we suss out exactly what's included in those stimulus packages and we figure out where our city money is best utilized. I did have some good news received this week. As you were all aware, we received community development block grants from HUD. We received confirmation that as part of the federal stimulus package, we would be receiving additional HUD funding, particularly to respond to the COVID-19 crisis. That will be an additional $431,000 that the city is receiving to respond to the needs of low-to-moderate-income citizens in this time. Now that we have an idea of what the amount's going to be and the, some of the rules around it, I'll be presenting some options for how we would like to allocate that money. I anticipate it would go to some of our homeless agencies to help address some of the shelteries that they have. I think there are some needs for assistance to our citizens that are now out of work, and we're going to be looking at maybe some assistance for the schoolchildren that are without internet access at this time. So, but I am happy to see those dollars flowing into the city, and hopefully we'll be able to use them to address the needs of our low-to-moderate-income people. Along with the COVID response, I know we've had some mention of the census. I just wanted to reiterate, without being a broken record, to have people please complete their census information. The census determines more than you think. Everything from your representation to local agencies, but also, and very importantly, it helps to determine the funding that we receive as a city, as a county, as a state. Things, everything from Head Start programs, senior services, job training, and a myriad of different activities are all determined upon where your census numbers are. So if you think that this has nothing to do with you and it won't really affect your day-to-day life, all of these services, the funding we get depends on how many people are in town, and that is counted by the census. So please, 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 take the next couple of days and fill that out. And I think with that, I am finished.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Ms. Gink, would you like to present the consent agenda to us?
Yes. This evening, to confirm the promotional appointments of Colton Elliott to the position of Equipment Operator in the Department of Public Works and Utilities, Division of Sewer Maintenance, and Edward Truster to the position of Public Works Leader in the Department of Public Works and Utilities, Ground Maintenance Division, and to receive and file Oaths of Office for Shonda Corbin, Joshua Lentz, and Mark Horn.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the issues and actions set forth in the consent agenda.
Second.
And if we, guys, just to help out, Amy, if you're motioning or seconding, just say your name. That way she doesn't have to try to figure that out this time. It's kind of different. All right, Ms. Gink, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Nenney?
You're muted, Monica.
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Okay, motion agenda.
To recommend the bid from National Water Services of Groport, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $139,225 for the water well pump and water supply well number three repairs.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Vittori, second.
Roll.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
And to authorize a transfer of city-owned property at 603 14th Avenue.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Vittori, second.
Can we ask a question on the motion agenda? Is that...
Yes.
Susan, do you know the size of this lot?
I do not know the actual size of the lot. It's a single-family home.
Okay. I just was wondering, because I didn't have it in there, and what the current market value was for it. It seems like a no-brainer. I just don't want to do that. All right, single-family home.
It's a single-family home lot. It was originally acquired under a grant program and demolished. At the time, we were doing a program where if you maintained a lot for a certain amount of time, the city would transfer it to you. Due to some changes in management in this, in our department there, it did not get transferred when it should have. The adjacent owner has been maintaining it at least since 2016, and I believe prior to that. So we were recommending the transfer under the old program rules, because they relied on that and did actually take care of the property, saving the city maintenance money.
Thank you.
We're not doing mode of own any longer, is that right?
We're not, but this was a promise made under the old program, and they did follow through on it.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Gink, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bretman, looks like she is our legal counsel for the day. Would you like to present the legislation for us?
Yes. There are 11 items of legislation on tonight's agenda. Six of those are emergency items. We are asking for a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following items. Ordinance number O2020-14, ordinance number O2020-15, resolution number R2020-07, resolution number R2020-08, ordinance number O2020-17, and ordinance number O2020-18.
Mulligan moves that the previous, I'm sorry, Mulligan moves that the charter provision requiring two separate readings be waived and that the previously read ordinances and resolutions be read one time only.
Nenney, second. Roll, please.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-14, an ordinance authorizing a contract with R.A. Miller Construction Co., Inc., for the 2020 Local Street Improvement Program and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Moon, second.
Roll, please, or sorry, any comments on this one?
I would just note, this is our annual local street improvement. It's presented as an emergency tonight to meet the schedule of the party awarding the bid. I'm not going to read the list of things that are getting paved, but it is available on the worksheet and will be available, I believe, on our website if citizens have concerns. This was the lowest and best bid. We have done some business with them in the past, and I anticipate this will be a successful season.
Any other comments? Okay, roll, please.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-15, establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Southeastern Equipment Company for the purchase of a Bowmag tandem vibratory roller and declaring an emergency.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Vittori, second.
Do we have any comments?
I think we heard a report on this the last time, but just to reiterate, this is a roller that is necessary to complete the summer paving from the city crews. If we were not purchasing it, it would take longer to pave with our smaller equipment.
Do we plan to sell the old equipment to reduce the cost of the new?
I don't have that information in front of me, but typically we would sell everything on gov deals that is over $1,500.
Hopefully, we can get something good out of that.
Yes. We will make every attempt to.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Gink, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-16, an ordinance to levy special assessments for repair of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons in the City of Middletown during the year 2019 against the lots and lands benefited by said improvements here tonight for a second reading.
So move for adoption. Mulligan?
Vittori, second.
Any comments on this?
I believe we heard this briefly the last meeting. I did want to note, there has been one change made since we last saw it. In section four of the legislation, we moved the date by which the parties could come and pay the city before it got assessed on their property taxes to August 1. That is a later date so that we can allow citizens more time to pay the assessment prior to it getting put on their property taxes and allow them some additional time to pay the lower amount. Given the COVID-19 virus, we wanted to give people a little bit additional time as we were able to do so. Unfortunately, there are some statutory requirements on when we have to get it to the county, so we couldn't push it much later, but we wanted to give any time we had available.
Thank you.
What is the latest date that it could be pushed to? Is that it?
It has to be certified to the county by September the 1st, and so we want, set the date August 1st so that they, our finance department would have enough time to make sure, double-check everything that's been paid before we certify it to the county and make sure that everything's correct when it goes there.
I would just say, if it was possible for us to, you know, if there, we just don't know how long this is going to last and the impact on our citizens, and I know it's a lot of work on our finance department as well, but as late as we could push that, if this does continue to get extended, definitely would appreciate that. I'm sure a lot of our citizens are thinking the same right now.
We will do the best we can, but we are against that statutory requirement, so we didn't want to put it much later for fear we would not be able to process it in time and then we would not be able to recoup any of the money.
Okay. If this does go later, is this something we could circle back on the date at all, or once we're approving it, that's kind of it?
The state would need to make a statutory change that allowed us to push it past September 1st. We'll put it on our radar in case there is a state change, but otherwise we do have a statutory requirement to certify it by September 1st.
Okay, that's something I would definitely ask if this stay-at-home order gets extended much longer, then that's something let's look into and placing a little pressure on the state to push that deadline so that we don't have to put the pressure on our citizens.
Certainly.
I'll make note of that as well. Any other comments on this one?
I just want to interject one piece of information. So the date, the county auditor, you know, that is required to get it to the county auditor has everything to do with them sending out the February tax bills. So, you know, just like a domino effect, every delay or every pushback, then it pushes back. So I just wanted you to understand what that September deadline is. The importance of that is because then the county auditor has to get those assessments, get them on the books before they send the tax bills out to the, to the entire county.
I find this one very, I'm having a lot of heartache pushing this forward. I'm sure a lot of council members are feeling the same way. I just want to tell our citizens that, you know, if this does get extended, I promise you that I will make every effort to push with the state that these deadlines get pushed back so that we can push these back for you as well as citizens. So please know that we have you in mind, and this is not that we want to put you in a hard, a difficult place at all. Okay, Ms. Gink, would you call the roll on this?
Mr. Moon?
Epstein?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Nenney?
Yes.
Ms. Vittori?
Yes.
Resolution number R2020-06, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31, 2020. This is the Police Grant Fund here tonight for a second reading.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Vittori, second.
Any comments? Any comments on this one?
I have no additional information unless there's questions.
Okay, Ms. Kink, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Resolution number R2020-07, a final resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for the extension of the Great Miami River Trail and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments on this one?
Yeah, in 2016, we had applied and were awarded an OKI grant to complete the portion of the bike trail that goes from Dayton to Cincinnati. This was a joint award with Franklin. Total project value for both Middletown and Franklin is about $2.5 million. The Middletown portion of that is $1.038 million. The way OKI grants are, it really does run those four or five years behind where you apply in 2016 and for a project that you want to complete in 2020. So now that approved application is coming in, this requires OKI to pay $601,480, a local match of $436,980. I don't take that amount of money lightly given our budgetary concerns, but I do know this will be an amenity for citizens, allow us to continue that use. And if we were to choose not to go forward with this grant award now, it could affect our ability to get other OKI grants in the future. So we're recommending use this money now to invest in the city and this infrastructure.
An OKI is also doing the Central Avenue repaving in 2022 that we're seeing the signs up for. So that was another significant investment they're, they're making until.
Scott and his crew have been very successful getting OKI grants and this is a reflection of that.
Have we contacted ODOT or OKI to see if they have considered pushing deadlines back for some of these grant payments?
I have not spoken with them directly. I think my understanding from speaking with Mr. Tadic is they indicated they're ready to move forward. I didn't ask the particular question about whether they're willing to push it or not. I would anticipate the answer is no because their schedule is so set and so far in advance, but I have not directly asked the question.
You know, Susan, this is budgeted for 2020. This is something that we are expecting to make a payment on and that Jake is comfortable with us spending money on at this time.
Yes, that's correct. Part of this money also has some stormwater capital. We're going to be replacing stormwater culverts, which is part of our upgrade to our storm sewers and that project. And so we, we're using it as a joint and we anticipate these are budgeted funds and we'll be able to move forward.
I would, when is the deadline for us to have to approve this? I know it's in here somewhere and I've been trying to find it.
Project is supposed to go out for bid April the 23rd. And so they're asking for this now to get that in line.
And is that the latest we could put the bid out for?
Under their schedule, yes.
I'm just, of course, like my biggest concerns are, obviously, we're coming up on the potential peak of this COVID-19 per Director of Health information. I am concerned about potential overtime costs incurred in our first responders having a bigger impact than we're anticipating. Other Ohio cities are anticipating a 20% to 40% decline in their income tax this year. And I know we are thinking it's only going to be 8% for Middletown. And that we didn't expect a lot of overtime from our first responders. But for example, there's a city and I, I lost my note, but they already have showing a 10% positive test results for their first responders to COVID-19 in their city with seven, the additional 7% showing signs and symptoms that haven't been tested yet. And I just say that from a budgetary perspective because if they're looking at about 20% of their first responders who have, end up contracting COVID-19, that means that all of the rest of them are incurring overtime to an incredibly high rate. And a lot of these cities are already experiencing huge budget issues as a result of that, that. So I am super supportive of this bike trail. I mean, I want nothing more than to have it go through. I'm just looking at the timeline. It's not being started till the end of 2020. If there's any fudge room we have in pushing back a decision or pushing this back a little bit just to see where our money really ends up, I would love to hear that, but.
I would, I would point out though, Mayor, that this is particularized funds. We can't use it for general funds. They are out of our enterprise funds.
Okay, I read it said general fund capital.
That's out of the enterprise funds. So it's capital funds for, funds for capital improvements out of the stormwater funds or out of the, the enterprise funds.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good to hear then. Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, Ms. Kink, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Resolution number R2020-08, a resolution authorizing the contribution of city funds to downtown Middletown, Inc. to be used for matching funds with the Heritage Ohio Downtown Redevelopment Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Nanny, second.
Do we have any comments on this one?
Is there, these are UDAG funds, correct? These are not general funds?
These are UDAG funds. We were coming together with DMI and our Main Street program. We've Middletown Moving Forward's also involved to do some matching fund grants for people that want to do residential rehabilitation for residential units on the upper level floors of buildings in the downtown area. We think this is a great way to use some of the UDAG funds to help leverage the funds that other people have gotten and allow people to do some additional financing on those projects that put residential on the second and third floors of their buildings right in line with our housing plans.
And similar to our last conversation, those have some restrictions. Is that correct?
The UDAG funds?
Yes.
Yes. These are downtown development.
Right. So they're not general, we couldn't use them for general fund dollars?
No.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Kink, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Vettori?
Epstein.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-17, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Powell Contractors, Inc. for the repair of the North Interceptor Sewer and declaring an emergency.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Moon, second.
Anyone have any comments on this?
This is a sewer pair necessary. On March the 2nd, we had a North Interceptor Sewer partially collapse in the area of Forest Hills Country Club in the vicinity of Second and Carmody. This is a line that serves a large portion of central and north Middletown. The pipe was a 48-inch pipe installed in 1958. There was no choice but to start the repair to prevent there from being service outages to citizens. The bypass was set up. We're now recommending awarding a contractor to replace 875 feet of pipe in order to continue to guarantee service in that area. Would note, this is also fulfilling a requirement towards the city's consent decree. Repair is expected to take four to five weeks.
Susan, does this have any intersection with the levee that's over there?
I am not sure.
Okay, I'm just noting and not, doesn't have a positive or negative impact on my vote, but I just wanted you to know Shelby and I met with Miami Conservancy District on the 9th of March and they mentioned that the levee at Forest Hills Country Club could use updating if we, if there were any sort of development going on over there. So I just mentioned that because it's, I don't know, it's possible there may be other funds or other efforts or things we could do in conjunction with them over there if we're already having to do some construction. So I would reach out, maybe Janet By or Dan Foley over there might be able to point to contact on that.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Ms. Kink, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-18, an ordinance authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Ohio Labor Council, the police civilian employees for the years January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mulligan moves for adoption.
Nanny, second.
Any comments?
This is a new labor contract for our police civilian. It is a small unit that handles a lot of our records clerk issues. They have been working on an expired contract since December 31st. We were finally able to reach terms for three years. It is similar to what we have offered other employees, trying to keep some equity amongst groups. It calls for an increase of 2.5% in wages per year, a one-time lump, one-time lump sum signing bonus of $500. It does adopt an extended 12-step wage scale for new employees to allow the city to recognize some easing on the yearly raises, increases in uniform allotment, and some updating of bereavement and vacation leave similar to what we've granted to other employees.
Any other comments on this? Okay, Ms. Kink, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ordinance number O2020-19, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to consent to the Ohio Department of Transportation Type A guardrail replacement here for a first reading.
This is 100% covered by the Ohio Department of Transportation to replace Type A anchor assembly guardrails throughout their district. This simply consents, allows us to sign a consent agreement for them to come in and make the repairs. We have no financial obligation. It's just upgrading the guardrails for the safety of the community.
Any questions for anybody? Sounds like we'd be happy to take the money and the effort. All right.
Okay. Resolution number R2020-1, I'm sorry, -09, a resolution authorizing the filling of an application with the Department of Transportation in the United States of America for a grant under the Federal Transit Administration Act of 1991 as amended here for a first reading.
Any comments on this one?
We fill these, this one and the next one are very similar. Every year, we receive grant money from the Federal Department of Transportation as well as the Ohio Department of Transportation that covers the vast majority of the costs to run the Middletown transit system. Every year, we ask council to approve an ordinance, simply allowing us to apply for those grants for the next year. This is pretty much a yearly occurrence. The one thing I would note is usually this is later in the year. We moved it up a little bit because the grant requirements are simply asking that you apply earlier in the year. So this allows us to apply for the grant funds that operate the transit system. This first one is the federal transit grant and then the second one will be the Ohio.
Okay, any other comment?
Okay, last item is resolution number R2020-10, a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for CY 2021 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants under the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program here for a first reading.
Any comments on this?
I have given all the comments I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any alibis for any information that we have left out so far? Okay, great. Well, thank you, Middletown, for tuning in. We have, Susan, can you just confirm Monday, the 13th of April, we are meeting, council's meeting, and we'll then go immediately to executive session at 13:30 or 1:30 PM. And likely again on Wednesday, we believe, 13:30. That's Wednesday, the 15th of April. It's going to be the same thing, though. We'll convene and then go immediately to executive session. But our next council, official council meeting will be on Tuesday, April 21st at 17:30 or 5:30 PM. I imagine we will be doing it the same way since we'll still be at our stay-at-home order. So stay safe, Middletown. Here's to blue skies over Middletown and the entire United States of America. And we will see you on Facebook again soon.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you.